It's on Press Call, Work Study Session. Call to Order, June 4th, 2020. Welcome, everyone. Court, please call the order.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Packard.
Present.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Councilmember Gressman.
I'm here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor and I.
Present.
Mayor Pulguda.
Present.
We have a Coram Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. We're just going to dive right into this. Ms. Casey Van Herren, I believe you're up first. Speaking on the library update on COVID-19 protocol.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, so happy to be here to report on how amazing our library did during COVID. Thank you, Daner. I will say that this was the most challenging time in my career dealing with the pandemic and how we needed to switch our brains to provide services for our community. But darn if our staff didn't step up to the plate and knock it out of the park. So, Blue was great at the drive-up window. So, a lot of people enjoyed that. So, I just had to share that. So, May 17th, we shut our doors to the community. That was hard. But in the meantime, staff continued to be inside the building and did some amazing things. So, what did we do? We did all of this. We opened our drive-through, which was amazing because people said, "Oh, is this a new service?" We had our drive-through. We opened it up in 2013, and it got little to none, little to no use at all, excuse me. We adjusted our due dates to eight weeks. We raised our checkout limit to 75 items. We extended our hold pickups to eight weeks. We continued to answer phone calls. We went viral, virtual on YouTube. We did all sorts of amazing story times, story times in Spanish. We did virtual programs for Good Samaritan and cooking classes, which our Peabody Cafe did, and including our librarians. So, it was so much fun. Our staff again rallied to rethink a new model of service to our community, including digital content, online learning. And of course, the virtual programs were extremely successful. So, this is what I wanted to show you. Prior to closing in February, our drive-up saw 414 people in just a month, and that was about an average. April, we were closed for the entire month of April. We saw over 1,800 people use our drive-up window. And I know the mayor would sometimes, in the background on his Mondays, I could see the line in the background. So, that was exciting. Our program attendance, so prior to COVID, of course, we had in-person programming. So, we had to shift our thinking on how we could do this. Virtual program attendance, three, over 3,100 people viewed our YouTube videos, our Facebook posts, our TikToks. It was, we had a great response from the community. Our electronic materials, which were, you know, eBooks, audiobooks, they went up over 1,000. So, we had our community really rally in support of those materials. Oh, the other thing I want to say is, from March 17th until May 6th, we were the only library in the county that continued to provide services to our community.
You can say that again.
Yeah. We were the only library in this town of Prescott, or in, sorry, in Yavai County. I'm going to talk to you about that later. We need a branch. So, on May 6th, we opened with restrictions. We had Plexiglas on all service points. We removed 22 of our 32 computers. Our security guards took temps with a touchless thermometer, issued tickets to only allow patrons in the building for 30 minutes and only allowed 60 people in the building, reduced our hours, no volunteers, and no meeting room usage. Believe it or not, our community was extremely thankful. Everyone thanked us for being open. We did not, we never hit our 60 limit with our community. They still stayed away. They were hesitant, but no one ever gave us a hard time. It was pretty amazing. So, I'm going to show you just what it looked like with the new procedures when we first opened. Yay. That was super fun to make. So, that's what our new procedures looked the first week. And we only had those in place for a week because, again, we never reached our capacity of 60 people, temps. Again, we never had anybody that we turned away within that first week. All right, there we go. So, how do we do it? Kudos to Facilities. And I couldn't get a picture of Heather from Risk Management, but Josh Newsom from Facilities was amazing to help us accomplish all of that. He, we couldn't have done it without him. He gave us all our PPEs, along with Heather, made sure that we had our sanitizers, our gloves, our masks. He set all the social distance lines, sneeze guards, removed furniture, helped set up our new desk. So, and did all of this to help us open sooner. So, kudos norm to Josh. He's amazing. And of course, Risk Management, Heather Waldorf. They were both amazing. So, June 1st, we opened up with minimum restrictions. No temp, no time, no head count. Social distancing is still in effect. No meeting room usage. We extended our hours Monday through Thursday, 9 to 6, Friday, 9 to 5, Saturday, 9 to 3, and closed Sundays. We did welcome back our volunteers, which we need to push for in a big way because we, out of our 123 volunteers, only 13 have come back so far. A lot of them aren't coming back, and some of them are still waiting before they come back to make sure it's a safe place for them. And we're no longer quarantining materials since we've opened. We have no room to put these items, so. So, July 1st, full operations. Everything, all furniture, meeting rooms, normal hours except for Sundays. We want to make sure we approach the, have the appropriate staffing levels before we open up on Sundays, but Larry has graciously allowed to hire so we can start looking at opening on Sundays again. And again, we could not have done it without staff. They were amazing through all of this. It was tough. It was touch and go for a while, but all of them were resilient. I have to give kudos to, at the bottom here, Charlie Nardo and Renee Anthony are graduates from A A E C in Bradshaw. They are the most resilient girls, and our future is going to be perfect with those two. They're smart, funny, and put up with me. So, kudos to our staff. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Vice Mayor.
Explain the size of that underwear. I know the story, but many do not.
So, it was, Shannon did a story with the giant underwear that she bought, actually. They're available online to buy giant underwear. So, she did a storytime with the giant underwear with Captain Underpants. So, it was great for the kids.
I've been waiting for this meeting to share something with you. About the third day, I think, that we were finally open, I drove up, I wanted to see how it was going. And as I was coming in, a lady was coming out. Literally, she had tears. And I asked her, "Was she all right?" She said, "I'm just so happy." And I said, "Because the library is open?" She said, "Yes, because it's always been my lifesaver."
Aw, thank you.
Casey, I just want to just commend you and your staff. You guys are the perfect example of being able to go with change. You know, it's never easy, but once you're able to start to adapt and then you kind of got stronger as a group, and we're still able to hold that, provide that service.
Thank you.
So, other departments should just look at you guys and say, "You know what? The library killed it. We can kill it too." So, great job.
Absolutely. We love change.
And Casey, isn't it true that you're the first library in the state to reopen?
We were, yes.
Great job.
That's great. All right.
All right, thanks, ma'am.
Have a great meeting.
Mr. Whitty, Parks and Rec Master Plan. I believe we're going to have our guest.
You are correct. Yes, sir. We have back with us again Mr. Michael Svetz from Prose Consulting. He's going to deliver his final wrap-up presentation with all of the previous elements that have been presented to you to date. So, we'll have a summary of those things. And ultimately, if we find that all of this is acceptable, we'll hopefully be bringing back to you then on the 25th the Master Plan for your adoption. So, this is what we have. So, without further ado, Mr. Svetz, please join.
Welcome, Mike.
Mayor, Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Just a, this is going to be, in many cases, no new information for you. It just kind of is a brief summary. You all have had the draft, final draft Master Plan for an opportunity to review. So, this is just kind of going to hit the highlights of, in essence, what the last year has culminated in. So, just to touch on, community need. Reiterate that, obviously, this plan is very much based on, you know, your community's desires for Parks and Recreation and, of course, your ability to meet those through a myriad of recommendations. Level of service methodology, unique here simply because of the relationship that you all have with Master Plan Communities. The Capital Improvement Plan, a summary of that, recognizing that, you know, it's one thing to build something, it's something else to completely operate it. And so, looking at it through the lens of total cost of ownership. Just some of the highlights regarding implementation strategies. And then, as Brian had mentioned, the adoption, tentative adoption scheduled for June 25th. So, community needs, again, just to kind of reiterate, you know, the high really kind of resonated, whether it was through the, you know, the public meetings, the focus groups, the statistically valid survey, the website, project website, where all this information can be found. Community special events, fitness wellness programs, swim, senior programs, water fitness and target shooting. So, that's quite a variety of high priority in your community. Again, medium priority is about strategically investing in those programs. And the low priority does not mean that you don't do them. It just simply means that you're not going to expand them if you are currently already doing them. If you are not doing them, you would not want to invest in resources simply because the community doesn't have a high need for those. Facility amenities, same components, same exercise. But indoor aquatic facility was number one. And then trails actually came in as two. And we've reiterated the whole comments regarding public restrooms in parks being a huge need. I don't know that it's been an ongoing conversation. So, same exercise when it comes to the medium and low priorities. Strategically invest on the medium side. And on the facility, low areas, simply continue to do what you're doing now. If you don't have any of that in play right now, do not introduce it as part of a CIP. So, this kind of tees up kind of where we're going. We talked about level of service. I think it's important to recognize that your community is going to continue to grow upwards of about 46,000 folks over the next 15 years. Again, these are projections. These estimates, obviously, will be updated at the end of this year, beginning of next year with the 2020 census. But, you know, this is in line with your general plan, the moderate growth scenario. And I think it's important to recognize that 100% of this growth is anticipated to be through Master Plan Communities. And so, some of the level of service assumptions, you're going to grow by about 46,000 folks. We recognize that all growth will occur in Master Plan Communities. And we recognize that Master Plan Communities will provide Park and Recreation, Parks, Facilities, amenities to its residents or to their residents. So, this kind of created a very strategic approach to determining how your system expands to meet this growth going forward. So, we've kind of dialed in a three-pronged approach. The first is, is understanding what the Master Plan Community level of service is. The second is to recognize that not everybody will live in a Master Plan Community. You still will have 30,000 residents that the town will need to provide a certain level of service to. And then, of course, Master Plan Communities can't do it all. And so, there is a level of service that the town will need to provide that's very strategic to the community as a whole in 15 years. So, the Master Plan Communities will really focus themselves on neighborhood parks and those amenities associated with neighborhood parks. If you grow the way you're anticipated to grow, it's expected that you will, to meet your general fund or your general plan level of service stated for neighborhood parks, which is 3.4 acres per thousand. And you grow at the rate that you're anticipated to grow within Master Plan Communities, that would mean that in 15 years you would be adding about 200 acres of neighborhood parks through Master Plan Communities. When we look at what you're going to focus on very specifically for the town, for the 30,000 folks that don't live within Master Plan Communities, that, again, is also going to be really focused on neighborhood parks. And we're looking at that to be about 57, 55 to 60 acres. And then, when we think about the community as a whole, so you are certainly going to have to provide services to all 96,000 folks because the Master Plan Communities can't take care of all of them. And that is really going to be primarily through community parks, through phased-in approach at Aguafria Park. And that would equate to about 212 acres. And so, that kind of tees up, then, where do you go totally and completely? The idea is, is to recognize you as a town will look to add 57 acres of neighborhood parks and about 200 acres of community parks. The elements that you will incorporate into those parks as a starting point or a guideline are all of those outdoor amenities shown below, the park acreage components. And so, it's a starting point. One of the things that we recognize as part of public park development is that you will go through a very public, publicly engaged, site-specific Master Plan process. And the amenities or level of service for these amenities are a starting point for you. They're not meant to be the end-all, be-all, but it really takes into account the needs of the community, the experiences they want out of your parks. And it doesn't mean that you won't add things that aren't necessarily on this list, but when you start to create those site-specific Master Plans, this is intended to be your starting point. When we talk about indoor facilities, we're really talking about the partnership that is moving forward with the YMCA. And we anticipate that that facility will fully meet that 50,000 square foot need within 15 years, but hopefully sooner than those 15 years. So, recognizing that you have acreage to add, parks to build, potential facilities to partner on, we want to make sure that we ground this in a total cost of ownership. And so, it's one thing to have a capital investment. It's another to recognize that you have to have the O and M dollars, operations and maintenance dollars to manage and maintain anything that you build. And we also recognize that anything that you build doesn't last forever, and that's the lifecycle replacement component. So, one of the things that we have done is teed up your Capital Improvement Plan to recognize the lifecycle replacement component. So, we've divided this up into three buckets. First bucket is really, what do you anticipate over the next 10 years that you are going to have to lifecycle replace? The second bucket is, how do you take advantage of your existing park system to add experiences without building new parks? So, where are their opportunities within your existing park system to meet some of those level of service requirements that meet the highest priorities of your community? And then, the third bucket is, obviously, the big picture bucket, the building of new parks, that 57 acres of neighborhood parks and 200 acres of community parks. And so, some of the assumptions that we arrive to, we recognize that COVID potentially has a very short-term economic impact to you all. And I think you will continually balance and rebalance your CIP, especially over the next five years. But we're projecting that, understanding that this is a 10-year planning horizon, and we're not all trying to do this in the next two years. We recognize, we think that these will all be financially viable projects. They are very responsive to the data and feedback that has been received and collected through this process. It's consistent with other planning efforts, such as the level of service acreage for neighborhood parks and community parks tied back to your general plan. And we did apply a 5% cost escalator for each year of the CIP kind of going forward. So, this is a quick summary. Sustainable projects, you're looking at close to 18 million over the next 10 years. And this is really the lifecycle replacement component associated with your existing facilities. Expanded services, this is the bucket that is usually the smallest because if you've done a good job of building your parks to meet community need, there's not a lot to add to it. But we did identify some small projects associated with your existing park system. And the visionary projects are really that big picture, and it's really associated with the development of Aguafria Park. So, your grand total is around 130 million over 10 years. As far as how you divide it up, about 30 million is associated with your existing park system. Existing trails is about just under 100,000, as I mentioned. New park development is 100 million. And then, of course, administrative projects is in the neighborhood of 325,000. That is recognizing that you'll want to update your Master Plan in 10 years, but also to look at doing such things as updating a trail plan and developing an urban force management plan. So, as I mentioned, we really looked at trying to backload this, especially in light of COVID, whereas you're looking at most of the dollars and cents being in the out years and most of those dollars and cents being attributed to the development of Aguafria Park. So, there's obviously a number of steps that need to take place in order for you to get to that point. But recognizing that, if that's 100 million, you're talking about 30 million for the rest of your existing park system over the next 10 years. I will make a note, I think it's important to recognize that you all have done a great job of not just funding your O and M on the park maintenance side of the equation, which is very reflective of the park assessments that were shown in the Master Plan document. But you've also done a great job on the lifecycle replacement component, maybe restrooms being aside. But for the most part, you've done a really good job. And so, what we're introducing here isn't really a different approach to how you're maintaining your existing park system. It's a continuity of how, of the best practice that you all are already operating under. So, parks maintenance, I mentioned total cost of service. This is where the rubber kind of meets the road. You do park maintenance in combination with your own staff as well as third-party contractors. And so, when we look at this and we start to say, "How much money are you spending on each of your park classifications at a unit cost level?" So, that means, how much money do you spend on every acre of mini park, neighborhood parks, community parks, special use parks, open space? And when you start to consider what you're spending against what the best practice is, you're very much in line with the best practice. And when I say best practice, it's really kind of dialed into your region. This is not best practice in California, or Minnesota, or Texas, or Florida. This is best practice for Arizona. And having been a Parks and Recreation Director down in the valley, I can tell you that having gone through the Great Recession and recognizing the inflationary costs over the last 10 years associated with managing parks, your numbers look very, very similar to what our numbers were as we came out of the Great Recession and obviously became more effective and efficient. So, you're doing a great job. The other component is obviously programming. And so, experiences very much dictate how you develop your park system and programs, not unlike what is done at the library. You do programs as well. And so, this is not meant to be something to strain your eyes at. It's in the Master Plan. But basically, we took everything and divided it up into high priority, medium, and low. This is just kind of a summary of what I said earlier as we went through the needs. So, if you're doing something and it's in the high priority, that's where you want to invest more resources because that's where you have a lot of unmet need. Something that's in the green in the middle is really about, again, continuing to manage your programs and identifying where there are strategic opportunities to implement new ones, but not just, not go all in, not put all your chips to the table. And then, on the low priority, as I mentioned earlier. If you are going to do it, you have to make sure that it's very strategic and you have an audience. You're not looking to expand much of this. And I would say that you, there is a likelihood that the low priority become a higher priority for you all as your facilities continue to expand and your community continues to grow. And so, that is why there's a lot of consider when you think about the low priority because you don't want to just dismiss it. If your community's in five years, 20,000 or 25,000 people more than it is right now, you don't want to say... And so that is why there's a lot of consider when you think about the low priority, because you don't want to just dismiss it. If your community's in five years, 20,000 or 25,000 people more than it is right now, you don't want to say we don't have a need for that. You want to consider the fact that your population has increased by 50% and that you're introducing new residents that might have some new needs. So from an implementation perspective, this is really just a quick snapshot. You're going to grow your park system. You're going to invest and reinvest in your trails primarily through the development community. You're going to continue to make existing parkland improvements. You're going to identify opportunities through the development of Aqua Freya Park to potentially have park development contribute to economic development for you. You're going to try to continue to expand upon your recreation programming in the areas in which are most desired by your community. Operations and staffing, this is always a biggie. We can have all the recommendations in the world, but if you don't have the right staff in the right place to do the right job, it becomes a barrier. And so continually investing and reinvesting in your staff and recognizing that as your park system grows, you are going to have some commensurate growth within your staffing levels as well. Either that, or you're going to at least be managing a greater volume of third-party contracting. And that in and of itself takes staff as well. And then, of course, financing it. What we have here is the top six ways in which you will finance your, the capital or capital improvement plan associated with the master plan. Grants, Parks Foundation, capital improvement fees, park development fees, potential bond issues and partnerships. All of these are your highest mix of funding strategies, and I think you do a great job of diversifying it so that you're not putting all your eggs in one or two baskets. And so these, the highest priority funding strategies were developed in partnership with the town, town manager's office, as well as finance. So this was not done in a vacuum. So our next step, as has been mentioned, we're seeking final master plan adoption based on the document that you have on Thursday, June 25th, about three weeks from today. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
Counsel, we have anything?
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is awesome because I saw it at the beginning as a Parks Commissioner, and it really turned out beautifully. Thank you very much for your experience. I want to start out by giving Brian kudos because we were spot on with the best practices for cost of service. So that's your doing, and I really thank you for that. I'm interested in trails, and that came up high almost everywhere.
It always does, yes.
So in the new plan, do we show all of our trails, including sidewalks and hard trails and easy trails? And I'm not terming them right, but tell me about trails.
So there is a trails plan in place, and I'll let Mr. Witty dive in. But there is a trails plan in place, and in the master plan, we recognize that the map is, that is in the master plan is directly from your trails plan. We recognize that right now, I think you'll continually look to update that, but I think you're seeking to make your connections that don't exist right now as part of the development that is yet to come. I think that's where you're definitely seeking to continue to create a trail system, I've always used this phrase, but create a trail system in which it's not a trail to nowhere. And so you need that continuity and connectivity. Trails are not something that we put a level of service standard to. So it's not about how many miles do you need for every person in your community? It's about having a strong network. And once you get that strong network, then you're not looking to add any more miles. It's about managing, maintaining it, and making sure, I think, at the end of the day, it's built to the right specifications. And if there's anything you want to-
So I guess my question is, because we have a level of, let's say, a level of opportunity in our residents, their abilities. And I just want to make sure that we're taking credit for sidewalks and trails and all of that, because we have a lot of that already existing, right? Yeah.
If I could, we're growing into the trail system by requiring, and it comes to mayor and council for final approval on final development plans for the new subdivisions. And so what it is, we have perhaps a square mile that is empty, and then because of that checkerboard nature, all the connections are not made, but we're growing into that.
And then my second question is, your 30,000 number that you used for the core, not in the master plan, is that a 2034 number or is that a current number?
That's a current number and a 2034.
Because we have about maybe 1,500 at the most, because we have 500 vacant lots, times three, maybe 1,500, maybe 1,000 more to add to that number. So it's close. Okay, good.
Yeah, exactly.
You have something, Counselor?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. I went through the master plan. I didn't read the whole thing, but I definitely went through it. And it is so comprehensive and complete. It is actually, it's impressive. It really is. And I just want to thank you for the amount of time and effort that went into this and the amount of planning and the benefits that this community is going to get as a result of this plan is going to be awesome. I can't wait to see the finished product.
Thank you. It was definitely a team effort. I cannot stand up here and take all credit. There was a lot of input and strategic direction and information provided by the town along the way.
You have something, Vice Mayor?
Anyone that knows me well knows exactly what I'm going to talk about. I just want to make some introductory comments, and then you'll understand. In 08, we had just begun to rebuild our arts and culture funding and everything. And then we, you know, had that horrible downturn of the economy. Well, of course, my hopes, we were going to be there again. And of course, we have another issue that we can't plan for or manage. But I did see arts and culture projects in there, and I would be virulently angry had they not been. And Brian knows I'm not stretching a point. I want to thank you for that. And, you know, I just have a few months, more months to serve here, but I won't be going away. I will be here begging and pleading for arts and culture dollars. We have an entire generation growing up on social media now, and they are deprived. I'm sorry. They are deprived. Many of them having a brush in their hand and finding out whether they have some kind of talent or not. So this community will not forsake them because I won't go away. But to repeat, thank you for the items that were there.
You're welcome.
Steve, I just want to thank you. I mean, you put a great, comprehensive plan together, as has already been mentioned. And I know last time we discussed the, or kind of had a dialogue in regards to the population estimates. You put us at 50,000. I think the state estimates us at 46,500 now, according to the plan. I just, I'm challenged to see us going at 7% every year compounding to reach that 90,000 population. Keep in mind, we were at 1.8% growth last year. So that's a huge jump to go from 1.8, especially in a post-COVID environment, to 7% every single year. So I just, I just don't see those numbers. And then just, you obviously are going off the data that you were presented with. I'm just throwing it out there that even at a 3% growth, my high school math puts us at 71,000 people in 15 years. It's a lot different than 90,000 people.
Agreed. And I think the, I think the one thing, there's a couple of factors. Number one, I think it's, it's important to recognize that the data was definitely derived from a bunch of different data sources. So staff's input, the Environmental System Research Institute, which is a global leader in terms of market data, state. And I think at the end of the day, what we were trying to do was align with your moderate growth scenario that's listed in your general plan. And I think the importance of a projection that is nine years, it probably couldn't be any more incorrect. Maybe that's a right statement, because we jumped right into a census year as we were coming out of this. And so, as I mentioned, you're going to reset those populations. The one thing that having a population-based level of service means is that you're only going to provide, your park development and the funding necessary associated with that is only going to escalate as your population growth escalates. So if you hit 50% of that projection, which I think is about what you just mentioned, in the next 15 years, you're going to have 50% less of the need associated with it, and therefore then 50% less need for funding to fund 50% of that. So I think the whole driver behind it is just to recognize that your park system is going to expand, the funding associated with your park system is going to be needed, but it's going to do it in a way that is commensurate with whatever your growth pattern ends up being.
Sure. No, that is, great explanation. I appreciate that. Can you back up like three or four slides where you had the high priority, medium priority, low priority? Can you do that? Are you able to back up or no?
Sure, absolutely.
I just want to just point something out that hopefully you know. Oh, I think you passed it.
I'll go back to the easier one to read. Sorry.
So we looked at-
This is parks. Are you looking for programs or-
No, no, but yeah, not this one.
Next one.
Yeah, so if we looked at what priority was high, medium, and low, there's not one, one topic in your high and medium that starts with youth. They're all in low. And I think that's a challenge right there.
And again, I think it is a full recognition that when you think about your community as a whole, when you think about your community as a whole, the things that end up being on the low priority become very skill-specific or very age-specific. One of the things that we did include in the master plan, though, is a prioritization based on age segmentation. I did not, I'm sorry, I did not include that as part of this presentation. But when you think about what do the kids, what do families want with kids 0 to 10, there's a different priority set than there is for your population that's 55 and older. And so I think that that provides some guidance for staff when we start to think about programming, what those priorities are for families, kids with 0 to 10, families with teenagers, young adults that don't have kids, or empty nesters that don't have kids, as well as then the older age group. So that information was something that was very much requested when we first started talking about the demographic makeup of your community and recognizing that different ages, different, you know, you have different needs as you age through your life when it comes to parks and recreation. So those are very much in front of your staff, recognizing that even though there are certain things up there that are high priority for your community as a whole, there may be very different priorities for families that have young kids.
No, and I think that's, I think that's a balance that we need to recognize. And I know Parks does a great job trying to appease every age group, but I think it just needs to reflect in what our master plan is going to be. I kind of look at it as, you know, my parents are in their 70s. My mom would do probably everything but target shooting in that high priority one, right?
Exactly.
But my five-year-old twins would probably do nothing in there. So I look at it from that perspective. And I know there's a lot of other, you know, families, and we kind of gear ourselves towards that. And I just want us to hopefully continue with that.
Yeah, the challenge of doing a master plan is you're reflecting your community as a whole. But I think it's important to recognize that staff is looking to develop a program plan that comes out of it that has very age-specific, has very age-specific targets to it.
Awesome. And the final thing I have, hopefully, as we do things with roads and you use the bucket analogy, which I think is a great analogy for, you know, putting the money aside, hopefully the staff can come with that same projection of a specific type of plan and saying, hey, we hope to have X number of dollars put aside every year in anticipation of being able to put it towards this end result. I think that would be terrific. I think it gives that light at the end of the tunnel, because we can talk about it all day long, but unless we're actually doing something to get there, I think that's important. And I think, I think that's something we need to focus on. And that is it. And again, I reiterate, great job putting it together.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
Sorry. Can we get a copy of your PowerPoint put in our boxes?
It is actually on the project website, but yes, you can.
Thank you. It's great information.
So for the community as a whole, all of this information is posted on the project website as well.
Anything else, Counsel?
I'm just thinking that 15 years passes by so fast, and it's just going to be amazing to watch all of the new things that are coming. And I just truly appreciate all that you guys do and how hard you work for our community now. And what the mayor's not expecting is that those five-year-old twins will be 20 years old by then, you know? So it is amazing how fast it can go.
We don't want to rush it. I've got a 20-year-old and an 18-year-old, so I know exactly where you're coming from.
Well, hopefully, they'll be at the grand opening of the Aqua Freya Park by then.
There you go.
All right, thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
With that being said, I believe we're moving on. Jason, Marissa on their way up.
My name's Marissa. I'm the aquatics supervisor. We're going to talk about our opening numbers and opening information from Mountain Valley Splash this summer. We opened May 23rd, Memorial Day weekend. We've updated some of our protocols and procedures to adjust to the COVID issues that presented themselves. Some of those are cleaning procedures and capacity guidelines. We'll go over some of our physical distancing protocols, our current schedule, our numbers for May, our mechanical improvements, and then a quick conclusion. Oh, yeah, should have put the graphic up first. That's our beautiful splash pad. So some cleaning procedures and capacity guidelines. Oh, my gosh. So we're disinfecting mostly by spraying down during our transition times that we've added to our new schedule. That includes our deck chairs, our kickboards, pool toys, equipment, concession area. We've heightened our frequency of common touch points when it comes to cleaning those, shower, restroom areas, railings, water fountain, et cetera. We've created a checkout system for life vests, whereas before, kids could kind of grab them. Now we check them out, make sure we sanitize them before they go out to anyone else. We've decreased our capacity. However, we've increased our number of open swim sessions, and our swim lesson class enrollment was adjusted slightly with some parent participation. So real briefly, we won't read all of this, but this is on the back of the schedule that we give out to the public. It's our Mountain Valley Splash physical distancing guidelines. Not only does it go over the physical distancing guidelines while at the pool, but it also helps to encourage those guidelines by promoting our online registration, which we have switched to this summer opposed to in the past, where we decrease the line, decrease the contact with people, and make it hopefully quicker and easier for them to get in the pool. So this goes over a lot of that. This is our schedule. We have lap swim Monday through Friday. We have our 50-plus water aerobics Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings. That just started in June. We have a morning swim lesson session as well as an afternoon swim lesson sw- you say swim lesson session, five times fast. Swim lesson session. We have 18 over aqua aerobics in the evenings and our open swim throughout the day. So some of the numbers for May, like I said, we opened May 23rd. Therapy swim, which is offered Tuesdays and Thursdays from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. We have had 12 people in the month of May, so it was only one week in May. So we're still working on upping those numbers. If we can accommodate more groups before, after, we might do so. When it comes to open swim, we offer it Monday through Thursday, 11:30 to 2:30, 3 to 6. Again, we promote online registration, and then when you show up, you quickly give us your name and you can come right in. Friday, we have three sessions, which is 11:30 to 2:30, 3 to 6, as well as 8 to 10. Saturday and Sunday, we have three sessions, 11 to 2, 2:30 to 5:30, 6 to 9. These are some of our numbers. We had 986 people pre-register, so we had an in-person amount of 604. That gives us total 1,590. That gives us total 1,590. We had four open swims that were at capacity, which is 125. Our lap swim, like I said, Monday through Friday, 7 to 8 a.m. Our attendance has been 48. We're able to accommodate 12 swimmers per lap swim. And then some total numbers, the morning session for open swim is at 604, the afternoon session 886, and the evening session is probably our low, well, obviously our lowest, at 316. Some of the mechanical improvements that we've been doing, our heater has been updated, all sorts of different parts of it, thanks to Jason and Bruno and Nick and everybody that has been helping us. Our splash pad chlorinator is currently getting updated and our main pool filter was replaced prior to the start of the season. That was quite a feat to see. We saw it on our Instagram, or we had it on our Instagram. It took like 14 people to get it in there. It was, looks like a spaceship. In conclusion, we've had a successful preseason as well as opening week despite some of the, I'm tired of saying COVID-related issues, but COVID-related issues, be it delayed shipping on things that we needed, our deck paint took longer than it's used to, stuff like that. We've been successful. We've streamlined our hiring process as well as our training procedures. We're working on improving those as we go on. We've improved our orientation as well as our opening processes, processes. We have a strong team of returners as well as new lifeguards and employees in our concession. These really are our frontline people, you know, our lifeguards, our swim instructors, they're in direct contact with the community, with residents, with kids. They're making memories that kids remember forever and I'm proud of them because they've had nothing but good spirits, positive attitudes. They're like a little army workforce of lifeguards and they've been really positive and open to the changes, which have been, some of them, new schedules can be difficult, but we have an awesome team at the pool. And that's it. Yes, I can explain what lifeguard training was like this year. So typically lifeguard training is pretty hands-on. Unfortunately, in the timeframe that we would usually do our lifeguard training, social distancing stuff was in place. The Red Cross extended expiration dates of current lifeguard certifications as well as implemented blended learning. So there was an online component as well as an in-person component that had some more physical distancing guidelines. Now that a lot of those have been lifted, we have been able to be a little more hands-on and get all of our new guards in the pool, practicing scenarios, backboards, CPR dummies, all of it. So that was a pretty big difference than what we are used to. Okay, that's it now.
That's it. Nice job.
Any questions for us?
Again, it has to do with a, kind of like the library, how you, you guys were able to just go with the flow and be fluid, if we're going to use a little pun there with water, or how you like that. There's some people that commented on my Facebook page about the surfacing of the base of the pool. Does that sound about right, saying it was like really, really rough? Is that something we have on a schedule? Have you ever heard any complaints about that?
Inside the pool?
I guess I'm, now I'm thinking I don't know if it was the outside walking area or the actual...
I haven't heard anything about the inside of the pool. The pool deck, we kind of scrape and repaint every summer and I think that maybe one day we could figure out a better system for that.
Gotcha.
But in the pool, I haven't heard that.
Maybe it was the, the deck where they were like maybe scraped their feet type. It's kind of rough, so, I mean, obviously for tripping and slick purposes, so maybe that's what they were implying on that. So that's something we do every year.
Yes, we redo the deck and the deck paint every year.
So that's probably what they were referencing.
I'll be in the pool tomorrow. I'll feel the bottom and see.
I couldn't imagine it being the bottom, but...
Yeah, I don't...
So, I appreciate that. So that's, that's all I had. Nothing else? Great job, guys.
Thank you. We just want you to know we appreciate you.
Yes.
Brian and Ms. Amanda, you going to come up for this?
Yes, we have some guests with us tonight. I would guess perhaps some of our sore feet could also boil down to when you're soaking in the water for long periods of time. That skin becomes that way.
That may quite possibly be it.
But having a non-slip surface on your deck is very, very important, so...
And just being kids and how they run around and drag their feet, I'm sure plays a large role in that, so...
Problem. Well, if everyone will venture back in their memory banks, we endeavored onto a project in partnership with our Prescott area Realtors Association. And this was led by a couple of our young scouts. And this was out at Mountain Valley Park in our off-leash dog park area. The fine folks that we have with us is Ms. Amanda Creel, and I'll let her introduce her other members of her board and team that are with us this evening, but this is in light of the assistance that they were able to provide to us via a grant from the National Association of Realtors. So they have a check presentation for you, but we do have some quick images here that I think we could reflect upon. These are some of the after images that we have with lots of trees, cleanup, new play apparatus, and lots of volunteer work that went into play out here, all in light of improving our opportunities for our users as well as our pets that are enjoying this particular area. Some before and after images that we have seen, both sides, both large and small dark park elements, and then also our volunteers. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Amanda and her group.
Hi, guys.
Welcome.
I am, or Ms. Amanda, as Kel likes to call me. I am the CEO with the Prescott Area Association of Realtors and we're super excited and I was just talking to Brian, we have a lot of grant money that we can get from the National Association of Realtors, so I beg you to bring us more projects that fall under that because there's no reason to leave money on the table. And as soon as Kel was elected, one of the first calls was like, you're a Realtor, you better help me get some money to Prescott Valley. We are super excited to be a part of that. I have our president of our association, Jeff Faschel, with us today. I have two members of our community service committee, Julie Rother and Barbara Phillips. And I have our community service staff liaison, Nicole Urban, and our communications director to get pictures for us, Dan Hoynes. And we have to have pictures to be able to get the next grant, so that's for the check presentation. So thank y'all so much for letting us be here.
Man, I thought Norm Davis spoke fast. He ain't got nothing on you, ma'am.
I've got the Southern 20. Hurts me out here.
You want me out, I'm guessing, right? Oh, you want me in it? Oh, okay.
Better have that member participating, right?
Amanda, you couldn't have said it any better that, I mean, don't want to leave any money on the table and everything, you know, obviously our four-legged friends as well as our citizens and thanks to our scout troop volunteers. It was truly a, a great project and we welcome you guys back for another check presentation anytime. So Brian, I know, was working hand-in-hand with you guys and throwing things out there, so that is terrific. Thank you, ma'am. All right, move on to item 3E, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item you have for you tonight is our annual service contracts. We'll have Casey pull up the schedule of exactly what all this includes, but Public Works, as you're well aware, we, for many, many years, we've had outsourced many of our, not only materials we purchased, but also service contracts. And so we've got long-term relationships with the local contracting and vendor community and I'm going to go through some of these contracts tonight. They are annually rebid, so some are renewals and then some are bid every year to get the new latest market prices. So let's go through each one. Roadway materials, you see first the annual material contracts. That's basically just the asphalt we buy, the cold patch material to patch potholes in addition to AB material and the like. That particular project is renewed every year with unit items for the materials we purchase in our streets department to maintain our streets. So this year Asphalt Paving Supply is the low bid contractor, but I also want to point out, we also award to the second on this particular contract, because there are time periods where they're running a different type of mix and they can't service. So it gives us the opportunity to go to the second person like a right of refusal in order to get material. So there's been a few occasions this year. Asphalt Paving Supply did have the contract this year, but we actually went to Vulcan on a couple of occasions because they'd be running a week or two with different mix for like ADOT, have a small operation. So the lion's share of the work is with Asphalt Paving Supply for purchase of roadway materials. We spend in the neighborhood of $100,000 to $150,000 on that particular contract with roadway materials. Second item I have before you is asphalt paving. That is the particular project that we do more significant patching of long stretches of roadway and/or in the last few years, I think council's aware, in January 16 when we started the significant heavy maintenance, we called it, when you see our roadway improvement that we do every year for $2 million. That's the particular contract that has morphed into a lot of that particular work is done with that particular vendor. We did have good competition here, as council can see from your council action, all three local paving contractors being Asphalt Paving Supply, Earth Resources, and Copper State bid this contract. Earth Resources was a successful contractor. I do want to point out, this is a particularly good example of how we're being very mindful of the current economic environment, that this particular contract will move forward, but we fully anticipate we're not going to do this contract typically in the fall like we do. We'll wait till spring. We're going to do a checkpoint here in October, I think, at our current budget, see where we are, where revenues are at, and we can actually benchmark each one of these particular contracts that we just don't award the work. So these outsourced vendors, we've got very good relationships. I do make calls to Earth Resources, you see there, and they fully understand. They say, we understand. We appreciate whatever you can let go and know that will be maximized when you can, but we'll be careful. This particular contract, Earth Resources did, has the current contract, but next year they're the low bidder and we'll anticipate, we'll see what happens in spring of '21 for the heavy maintenance we do. Thing that's important to point out too, with the roadway materials, they augment some of the heavier maintenance that they can outsource a lot of it, but our streets department will be able to do routine maintenance and we don't really see a lot of service level loss with maintaining streets. So we will make sure that we do a good job with patching potholes and maintaining a high service level. Next item, concrete, pretty self-explanatory. We participate with the Parks Department. We have several of our hardscape areas within Prescott Valley. Every once in a while, a concrete panel that's been in place for many years, 15, 20 years, it just, as I use the term, freaks out or breaks. This gets those little spot improvements. And Earth Resources had that contract this year and they are the low bid contractor again this year. We did send out, talked to a lot of different local contractors, but we only got two contractors that responded, but Earth Resources does a good job for us. And what's important to point out too, sometimes when we have residents, just our service levels, this we bid with the local vendors and we tell them, this is kind of a backfiller project. We like it done. It's not an immediate crisis need, but we get pricing accordingly. So at times we do get calls from residents that, geez, you know, this has been about 30 or 60 days and we said, we told you that because it's not immediate need. We'll do, make it safe. We'll do a little temporary patch of some asphalt if, you know, sidewalk panels become uneven or, you know, we'll take a panel out, but this particular work is done, you know, at times curbing can be replaced, it gets broken, you know, we have accidents. So we do use this as filler work, but we do never lose track of this particular work and they do a good job of using this for filler work and keeping a crew busy that may have a slot that they can go take care of this work. So we specifically bid this accordingly. Solid waste disposal, this is the dumpster service for all our town buildings, some of our outbuildings, you know, that Long Mesa, we have each of them, one of our town buildings here has a service, so there's varying service rates. Parks and Recreation, and even the police department uses this too, everyone has refuse, so this is a contract. This is actually a change Waste Management had the last couple of years. And Patriot Disposal, we did see good competition here, but they were, had to sharpen pencil on our solid waste disposal. And portable toilets, only had one bid this year from Patriot Disposal. Kind of surprising, a lot of vendors do this service and we send out the contract, but they choose not to bid. We do always a staff benchmark to make sure what was the price last year, it's well in line with what it was last year. So it's same cost of doing business, so we're real confident with those particular bids. That takes care of the RFCIA item for these particular annual material and service contracts. These are rebid every year and I could take any questions you may have before I move on to the next service contracts if you'd like, if you have any questions.
Any questions from council? Keep going, Norm.
So we'll move on to the next council action you have, our agenda item is the service contracts. These actually are multi-year bid contracts. Each year we look, they have a five-year horizon and we do rebid them at that five-year horizon, but we get with the vendor and ask them, what do you think? How'd we do? Do you need an increase? Or, you know, we checkpoint the service levels. We do have a separation at times, it just seems things aren't working out. So this year, I'm pleased with the current environment we're in, the economic environment that you can see that each vendor we've talked with, they've asked for no increase. And what's important too is we've adjusted our budget, but likewise, we're going to be very careful with how much work we particular do and may, you know, shave some service levels here and there to make sure we stay within budget. So we will perform each one of these services, but there may be some occasion that we'll have to shave that 5% or 10% or if more. If this economic environment continues, we have that ability. So we award the work up to an amount and we can, a cut from there if we need to. So likewise, we've had long-term relationships with each one of these vendors and we can adjust as, as I talked about. To go through, fuel, pretty self-explanatory. That's the card lock fuel system for, to fuel all our vehicles, very much streamlined with the card lock system and each particular department here at the town gets billed accordingly against that fuel. A very good service there. Mowing, we do some mowing in-house with our streets department, but this is the mowing for significant outsourced areas, Highway 69, somewhere along beltways like Lake Shore and Viewpoint is done by this outsourced service. We spend about $40,000 a year on this particular service and it's, it's up for renewal at no cost. Landscape maintenance, this can actually get bigger. We do participate with parks on this particular contract too. They do have several parks they outsource to Kaler Landscape and of course, all our medians on roadways is a part of the landscape maintenance. Thing that's important to note, the recent Glastre Hill median, you saw we added two miles of trees and bushes, so that's an annual increase of about $10,000 per unit item. So that's where we make sure when the trees are planted, we did a change order this year to make sure the new trees are a little tender, but they get taken care of right away with that huge investment we had from the Granville communities for the tree service, which has been very well received. So that's what goes on there. And actually weed control, things do grow, we don't want them, so there's some opportunity there to make sure that we do some weed abatement. Janitorial's pretty well self-explanatory. This is the second year of a contract. OCD has this particular contract. One thing that was nice here, I think council's been aware, that some of the loss of particular traffic in each of our buildings, we were able to negotiate with the OCD without, you know, much paperwork to say, here's the labor hours. That's where they've done the increased high-touch areas, the disinfection that you've seen. We were able to get those same labor hours with not much difference. And we're thankful to OCD because actually a lot of the particular nighttime work they did, it's difficult with high traffic, they were able to do during the day. So when our buildings were closed, there was a lot of concern by staff of making sure we're disinfecting. OCD was able to adjust their hours and we appreciate them to come in, not only morning hours, but to come to work in the morning. You see them hitting the high-touch areas. Our facility staff had hit them around noon and then of course OCD was in in the evening. So I think, you know, a lot of town staff saw that particular extra attention to hitting the high-traffic areas and touch areas with disinfection, so real, real pleased with that. And once again, no increase to renew if council so chooses. Streets sweeping, likewise, actually this particular vendor does both our mowing and street sweeping and we sweep our streets about every quarter. Here's a good example. We may choose to shave some of that service if need be to make sure our revenues match our particular service levels. With that behalf to answer, well, I do have one more. One of the service contracts that we've been used to rebidding was striping and pavement markings. We've had a relationship with TSI for many years, but this year we gave them a call and I, my understanding is the pavement marking is a little upside down with getting paint and so we need to rebid that because the unit items just doesn't work for them. So in all fairness, we can get by with the paint we have or the service level we have on our streets, but we will be rebidding this contract and bringing it back to council because we just need to rebid the numbers. You know, some of the supply chains in this current COVID environment, we're seeing it in construction, also materials. So it was interesting to me, we ordered a light the other day, well, the fixture comes from Canada. Well, as you've read, they're not allowing any border crossings. That includes people and also merchandise. So there's something going on with striping that we'll take a look at things and that's where staff will interface and, you know, bring good data why there would be a cost increase or maybe it's one supply change, but make sure our streets are striped safely, but we can look at the unit costs and put some competition out there and see where we can, you know, fill any gaps we have with reseeded materials. So we will, we'll rebid that contract here in the next 60 days and bring it back to you. Any questions I can answer about the service contracts?
Bye, sir.
I don't have a question, Norm, but I do have a statement. We did benefit from lack of traffic in our buildings because I've never seen our floors look so clean and state clean. And that's both this building and our town hall building. And I realize it's due to lack of traffic, but I sure have enjoyed it.
Norm, which of these are local? I mean Quad Cities.
Every single one of them has, has a local presence. You know, we do send it out and they're able to compete and yes, all these particular.
Awesome.
So we do obviously send out with the public purchase. It's, of course, worldwide in today's technology, but there is some competition we see from a Phoenix vendor, so to speak, every once in a while, depending on the service. But nice thing is, all these local vendors realize that, but they give us a good price. And the biggest thing is, we don't spend a whole lot of time managing these contracts. They know what's expected of them and a lot of it's pretty well streamlined. They know the operations folks and public works well. They just go do the work, send us an invoice and that's what's nice is they spend, you know, this money is spent on actual service, not on the paperwork or contract writing or meetings to talk about what we expect. So equally, our relationships can be as good with these particular vendors as we would with our own staff. They know what they're doing, they're specialists at it and, and that's what's nice is a lot of these contracts, you know, take the painting or street sweeping, you know, a piece of equipment like that can cost $150,000, $200,000. Well, you only need it, you know, a few weeks or a month a year. Well, that's what's nice is they serve other particular customers and it, and once again, there's some specialty items, too, on how to fix them. So what's nice is they provide that service and we realize lots of efficiencies, it's not parked most of the time because it's not being used, so. And some of the scheduling is nice to have, that they do service good schedule, so it's expected and a lot of it's pretty well streamlined.
Right.
Routine business year after year.
I did just want to make one quick comment also regarding Laura Lee's comment on the cleanliness of all the buildings and you really notice it in the floors, like in the elevators. It's like they have an extra shine and it's just been amazing. So I, I hope it's something that we can also keep, which would be great, but please do tell the cleaning crew that they have really stepped up and it's noticed and it is very well appreciated.
I'll do that, you know, just to take off from that, too, you know, Josh and his facilities crew, they took the extra opportunity with the building being empty to do that cleaning that's not part of this contract, that you need to do that, well, it's even hierarchy of spring cleaning, if there's a term.
Right.
They've cleaned a lot of the light fixtures, the stuff you can't really get to during service hours and that's where they've, they've done a lot of work there to say, yeah, it's been, you know, let's take this library building here, it's 10 years old. They did that 10-year cleaning to get in those areas. So they've, that's one, I guess, benefit that came out of it. They, we were able to get the building cleaned up and, and once again, disinfected.
Great. Move on to item 3G then. You still up for that? I think. Thanks, Norm. I thought you were still up here, so I didn't.
Mayor, vice mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to present this item for the town engineering agreement renewal. I will tell you, I don't speak near as fast as Norm, maybe that's why you don't see me very often. But we are due for, or by annual renewal of this contract with Dave and Associates. They've been our town engineer and engineering group for 32 years now, so the institutional knowledge that they have is greater than any of us in the public work staff. This is the seventh time I have presented this and I will tell you that, you know, his numbers are actually unbelievable. When I was in the private sector back in 2006, 2007, the engineering costs were double what his $60 are. He hasn't changed that in the seven times that I've presented over the last 13 years. So we're getting a, an extreme value from Dave and Associates in regards to that. And just to give you a brief overview of what all they do for us, they assist us in reviewing all easements for legal descriptions, exhibits presented for those, preliminary development plans, final development plans, assisting us in designing capital projects for us each year as part of our capital projects. The big project we're working on right now, Viewpoint Drive, they designed that for us, assist us with the reviews of all new subdivision and commercial development and just do a phenomenal job for us and, you know, maintain our model here at the town of using them for the heavy lifting, I guess I would say. So with that, I will wrap up. If anybody has any questions of me, I will be glad to answer them. If not, I will.
Just a quick comment, like Barb with our insurance. These have become our family. Anytime I interact with them, they really deeply care and that makes a difference to me personally.
Well, and I know Gordon's been involved for at least 28 of those 32 years.
Yes.
They have been.
Nice. No, they're, oh, I got a quick question. You made the comment at the very beginning about the price that he charges is, does that help when a developer or contractor or somebody doing work in the town, their application fees and their, the fees that they have to pay for, at the community development, does that affect them where they have to pay a smaller fee than they might in another community?
No, it does not. Those fees are basically the design work that they do is for town projects.
Okay.
Not for, I mean, there are a few developments in the community that when they created their original contract, they were allowed to work on in the town, but generally, they just do capital projects for us and they review everything else that comes in.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Davis, you're back. Federal Cares Act Transit Funding.
Yes, Federal Cares Act. Mayor, council, we have a unique opportunity upon us. I think we're well aware of the Federal Cares Act. I guess it's a $2 trillion bill that came out of Washington DC as a result of the current pandemic we're in. But equally, when we had some cares relief here in the last week for our general fund with lots of economic health that we've had here, there is an opportunity that came out of this particular bill that is for transit. And there is an opportunity here that $3.6 million has been allocated to the Central Yalapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, or SIMPO, that we're a member of with the other Quad City area partners we have, that there's an opportunity that this money is to be used for transit only, but it actually comes with a zero match requirement. So it's to help with the particular environment. So that's an opportunity we have. What's important to note is there would be zero local match required. Just to give you a little background, of course, we've looked at upstart of a transit system here in Prescott Valley a couple times over, over the years. May recall in 2009, we did the original implementation plan, how could we do a regional transit system here, a bus system, introduce it. And then here recently, council may recall in 2016, we actually did a study here for Prescott Valley proper that was a good benchmark, that we can implement a local bus, fixed route bus system here in Prescott Valley. And that particular study was done in 2016. The challenge always is, is if you're going to run a system, we need a new dedicated and sustainable funding source. And we've had studies done in the past, very good routes, establish what that would cost, but once again, we say, well, any new social service like this would require a sustainable, new sustainable funding source because transit's built over time and people rely upon it and if you all of a sudden stop it, you got to get that momentum going. So that's been the stumbling blocks in the past. We've had the direction in the past that it's not something by our residents, it's not something we want to pursue, is transit this time. There has been a recent endeavor through SIMPO this last year to update the 10-year-old plan, the transit implementation plan. So we participated, or I participated originally through CYMPO and this particular study was just adopted by the SIMPO board in April and it's a continuous guidance about if we could upstart a plan, what would that plan look like? So that's been some of the history and what we're here to ask tonight is Chris Bridges here with the CYMPO administrators here to talk about basically this current opportunity of 3.6 million of Cares Act money that can be used for transit and we'd like to get his presentation and get council's feedback on what we think about utilization of these funds. So I'd like to ask Chris to come up and he's got a presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome.
Thanks, Norm. Mayor, council, thanks for having me. Chris Bridges, administrator of Century Yalapai MPO. And I left the Nelson Nygaard sticker on the bottom there because I did take their slide presentation and modify it slightly, so to, to update it, but a lot of the information came from the consultant team and they were the ones that worked on the transit implementation plan. So just want to walk through what this funding would, would provide, what it covers, what it doesn't cover, and what the opportunities that we, we could potentially see from this. This money came through the Cares Act, which was passed in March, at the end of March, on the 27th, Congress and the president signed, signed this into law and provided $25 billion for transit across the country, which is about triple of what most transit agencies would see typically. Just kind of moving through here, our region as a designated census urbanized area, which is why we have SIMPO, is slotted, is apportioned, 3.592, I can't give you the change, but $3.592 million of transit dollars, as, as Norm had mentioned, at 100% with no matching requirement. So we presented this to the SIMPO board and said, well, we've been presented with this, what do you want to do? And they unanimously voted, well, let's see what we can do. Let's work with A.DOT, Arizona Department of Transportation and others and see what the potential is to pull this money down to be able to use it here locally because realistically, that's a lot of money to just land in your lap and say, nah, I don't want it. So what's the potential here? There's some keys that come along with this money and that you have to be an FTA, Federal Transit Administration, direct recipient to receive the funds. We are not. We were 10 years ago, we're no longer. So we have to partner with a different agency to try to, to see what we can do with these. I had a meeting today at 4 o'clock with the transit agency in Flagstaff and they are open to applying for these funds on our behalf and managing those, especially for the planning, which I'm going to get into here in just a second, to potentially move this along. So eligible activities, basically anything that you do with a transit system, whether it's planning, it's capital purchases, which could be vehicles, buildings, whatever, are all eligible, operating. Again, it's 100%, there is no local match required and there is, more importantly, no lapse date. It's encouraged that you spend these funds quickly. So the, the thought from the SIMPO board was, well, let's, let's do some additional planning because as Norm, Norm mentioned, we just completed a transit implementation plan and the door, the board accepted it back in April. That plan was based on six days a week, 12 hours a day, fixed route service, multiple demand response zones and, and a full-on with local match, 1.8 million dollar system. And that plan was put together with the communities. We had stakeholder meetings where we had, I would say the fewest we had was 50. The last meeting we had, we had over 80 people attend. They were consistent. We invited local elected officials and staff, as well as nonprofits and other providers to, to help form this system and we feel that the plan is good and as Norm had mentioned, it's the dedicated funding source down the line is, is what the, the hiccup has been. So we're looking at potentially utilizing this Cares Act money to start a demonstration project. Demonstration project would be a three-year with potentially plus-one, plus-one contract. What we learned 10 years ago from the previous transit plan, when we went out to bid, we did a two-year pilot and, and the majority of responses, when we asked people why they didn't bid, two years is not enough to recoup any cost. If they mobilize, hire staff, bring people on board, purchase vehicles, get property, whatever that may be, two years is not enough. So we've, we've got the feedback that, that a three-year with a plus-one, plus-one option would be good. Definitely something worth considering. So what we've done is we've, we've taken the opportunity to do this additional planning because starting a six-day-a-week, 12-hour-a-day system today is not a good idea. It's a horrible idea. Transit ridership is down. I just was, watched a webinar with the Valley Metro CEO. So in Phoenix, it's down 52%. Other regions of the state, maybe even more. And that's just simply people are staying home, they don't have a job, they were riding, they were potentially riding by choice, not necessarily by need. Yalapai Regional Transit, my last discussions with them, which they do have a route that comes into Prescott Valley once a week, they're only down around 10%. And, and I, I put that to, they really serve those hardcore riders that need them the most. They're trying to get to DES, which is here in Prescott Valley, they're trying to get to the Entertainment District, they're trying to get to Fry's and all those things. So depending upon what the agency is, to what the impact would be. But regardless, you don't want to start a 12-hour-a-day system in this climate. So we're looking at doing a phased-in planning study, which we do have a request for quotes out now. And I'll get into this here in a second, but hopefully we get back that quickly. The intent is to then come back to council, both Prescott Valley and Prescott, and present the findings of that, which would have revised five-year budget, revised ridership numbers and, and the requirement that we put in the request for quotes is that they make the Cares Act funding last at least three years, if not longer, under this type of system, provide a demand response only, not a fixed route. So demand response, just to clarify, it's not a ADA paratransit type system, which would supplement a fixed route. This is, think of it more like an Uber or a Lyft with a small vehicle, like a van or small bus. They are adaptive. It's, works through an algorithm, through a computer program that helps, let's say, mayor, you, you get on your phone and you can have an app, you can have a phone number. City Arlington, Texas is an, an example of this, I'll walk through in a minute. But you can schedule a ride and say, I'm at this location and I need to get to town hall. But along the way, I've also booked a ride and said, hey, I need to go to Fry's. And they pick you up, but along the way, they stop and pick me up. And they might ask me to walk to the corner, they might be able to pick me up at my house if, if I have certain eligibility requirements, I, I'm a senior, I have ADA needs, whatever that may be. So it's very flexible, but to think of it like a shared ride Uber-type concept. So that way, you're able to say, I'm sitting at my house and I want to go to Kohl's. You book a ride and they can, they could be there in the next 15, 20 minutes, potentially. So that's the concept. Now, just comparing what we had in the, the transit plan to what I just told you, it was a 1.8 million dollar system, 1.2 million is federal. SIMPO receives 1.2 million of federal transit dollars every single year and we have given it away every single year. So we've given away way more than we've ever spent, which is frustrating, but understanding there are matching requirements with that. That is a thing. So regardless of what happens through this process, we make this Cares Act funding last three years. There's still the consideration in year four and five and six, what are you going to do? But at the same time, after year three, if the thing's a disaster and it's not working, we, we would have a contract in place that would say, you know what? It's no good, we're pulling out. So there's ways to work around that or to be able to see, prove if this works or, or it does not. Our transit implementation plan currently shows about an $80 per hour. I've had conversations with some of these smaller type of providers that do this type of system and, and they're telling me it's more in the $50 an hour range. So it would be a little cheaper. Yes, service is not going to be as robust as would be a 12-hour-a-day system, but it can still provide a high level, which would provide access to jobs, job interviews, provide jobs directly through the system, get people to healthcare, get them to their prescriptions, all the things that we heard through the entire process of the transit plan, of what the needs were and why people would use it. So in our post-COVID world, which that plan was all done pre-COVID, and I agree with your, your staff member from the pool, I'm sick of saying COVID, it's, I think I say it every day. So the post-COVID and what I just described to you, a smaller system, hopefully less cost, try to phase this thing out, stretch it three years and hopefully, you know, demonstrate, does this thing work or does it not? We have an opportunity, we've given, we've been given a lot of money by the federal government here and if we decide to turn it away, that's fine. I'm, I'm just here to, I'm not asking you for anything, I'm just telling you what we can or can't do with these funds and, and if you see the opportunity here, I'm, we are more than happy as SIMPO and the board is emphasizing that, that we're here emphasizing that, that we're here to help the town and the city of Prescott and whoever else wants to contribute to this or be part of it. So I mentioned Arlington, Texas. So Arlington, Texas operates this company here, there's a picture of their vehicle. This company happens to be called VIA. They did a one-year contract with four one-year options, which I found curious that they were able to get a one-year deal with one-year extensions. After their first year, they doubled their service, the city council did. Arlington, why focused in on this one? It's very similar to the Prescott and Prescott Valley region. It's very conservative in nature. They were not supportive of transit in the past. They did, or did hear from their community that there was a need or a desire to have something. So they went straight up, no fixed route, demand response only. And each year, they have expanded the system. So they're three years into it and it appears that they are not going to be getting rid of this anytime in the near future and that it does work for them. Doesn't mean it works for us, but from what I'm hearing from other transit professionals, whether they're in the private industry or state or even from the Federal Transit Administration, this chunk of money is something that it's worth taking the opportunity to see if it works. If it doesn't work, that's fine, we can move on. But I did want to ask or add one thing because I know council member and I, Vice Mayor and I, you were going to ask this question. How do the NACOG vouchers play into this?
No, I wasn't.
Could I read your mind?
I know the answer, so I wasn't asking.
Oh, okay.
But I do have questions.
Okay. Well, I'll just fill in for the rest of the council. So we did include in the, in the study evaluation for this phased plan, how could the existing NACOG voucher program play into it? I did some deep digging. Thankfully, the, you know, the NACOG staff gave me some good information. Norm helped me a lot on this as well. There's one particular portion of the NACOG program that is eligible to be part of the system and it's job access. All of the other services they provide are not an eligible expense under this money. So we were, hopefully, Norman asked the really good question, is there a way we can just pay this directly and leverage what we have today? And it made a lot of sense, but it's, it's a no-go. But they could be part of the bigger system if it relates to job access. So that's a much smaller thing. It doesn't mean that the town and NACOG can't still partner on that, but I just wanted to throw that out because I figured it was going to be a question. So now, I'm ready for other questions.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, we do have many, the terminology that was used by you is vulnerable residents. Many of them don't live in the center of town. And many seniors aren't tech savvy. And I heard you mention about an app on a phone. I have some concerns. I'm luckier than most of citizens in my own age, but I want to advocate for them. How, how would they manage all of that?
So you don't have to use the app, that's the joy of it. So if you look at the Arlington method, they had the similar concern. Not everybody has a computer.
Right.
Not everybody has a smartphone, not everybody can access that or wants to. So they also have a phone number with somebody to answer the phone and schedule the ride for you. So that's part of it. And that's much easier for most people, right? They have a landline at least typically. And, you know, so if you can just call and talk to a person and book a ride, that's, that's part of what the system could deliver.
All right. If you don't live in the central part of town and you need door-to-door, is that going to happen? If you have to travel an extra 15 or 20 minutes?
So what I'm hoping through this short planning study for the phasing is to show an expanded demand-response zone that could include all of the town and not just be the central core. So that way, you can still get, right? If you, if you meet eligibility, just like you do through the NACOG program, you know, if you're ADA eligible or, you know, whatever requirements you need and they can pick you up at your door, they'll do it. If you're, if you don't meet any of those requirements, they might ask you to walk down to the end of the block and wait on the corner and they'll pick you up. But that's, that's the thing. Fixed route is, it's there. You got to get to it or you're not riding it.
Right.
At least this has some flexibility where you might only have to go a little bit or they can pick you up right in front.
All right. Let me talk to you about the little bit. Where I live, I have to go up a hill or down a hill.
Right.
Right now, I can't do that.
But you would fall under the, the exception where they would come to your home.
So how, you're right. How many exceptions will they have the availability is my actual question?
So I can't give you a number because I don't know.
I'd rather have you be straight with me.
Yeah. So I would like to say, everybody gets to get picked up at their door, but I can't tell you that.
That's not logical.
That's not logical and it's not, it's not reasonable. And until we get through this planning process, I honestly can't tell you. And that's why we're doing this additional planning, is so I can come back to you and answer those questions with a real number.
Well, the good news is NACOG vouchers will do that. So we need to work together as a team.
Yes, for sure.
And definitely, the way, way it would go is the way I would see it, you know, if this was to provide some sort of service, then the NACOG balance would then shift away from perhaps the $50,000 that the town invests into that and reallocates it in a different direction while still providing the same service. Because at the end of the day, the citizen doesn't care if it's a voucher paying for their way or if it's a system like this.
Right. I mean, there could be a combination where, you know, the town maybe still partners with NACOG and provides those rides that are outside of jobs, but, but job access, reverse commute-type rides could be funded through the transit system.
And this is all obviously post-COVID.
Correct.
There's a lot more questions. You're not going to have all the answers, but hopefully that joint work study will be able to answer questions for, for both Prescott and this council.
Right. Yeah. So our goal is to have this initial phasing plan done by the end of August so that we can come back to both councils in September. Part of the deal with the Flagstaff Transit Agency is that they're going to want to see some sort of vote from the councils that said, yes, we're willing to move forward and yes, we're willing to work together. And if that doesn't exist, then I tell the state, give our money away.
Sure.
So it's as simple as that.
I did have one more question. I'm delighted that you're going to do the vans for the project. It doesn't make sense to do buses.
Right.
At this time. I was looking at the van pictures carefully because I have great difficulty with stairs and I'm representing my population. Was that a lift for a wheelchair on the one picture there or are they stairs?
So they're all, all the vehicles, that's a lift.
Right.
So they're all ADA-accessible vehicles would be what we would require of a contractor.
Because we have a large population for that.
Right. And that's, and that's the key with this demand-response-type system, is that all the vehicles need to be able to access or handle ADA accessibility. Because if you can't, then you're not meeting federal requirements and then you're going to end up losing some money or having to pay money back and we don't want to do that.
And they're some of our neediest of needy.
Correct.
Councilman?
Yes. Okay, assuming that this program gets put in place and is successful for three years. Okay, starting year four, again, we come down to the sustainability of this program. Are you looking to involve the business community, the medical community, the school community to pay for this?
Yeah, for sure. So again, pre-COVID, we were getting verbal support, financial support from Alupay College, potentially, Embry-Riddle, the hospital, Finley Toyota, its potential of like wrapping a vehicle for advertisement purposes. I actually have a meeting with the Interim United Way Director on Monday to talk about how they could potentially look at helping for fundraising for the future, for those years, four or five and whatever. So we do have support, again, that was also several months ago, so that has to be revisited. But, you know, we're looking at in the neighborhood of four or five agencies saying, yeah, we're willing to put something in, whether it's just direct cash and our students get a ride or our employees do, or we can give it to, you know, family members that are patients here in the hospital or advertising on the outside of the vehicles. So we feel that the public-private partnership of it is extremely important and not to put all the brunt on local government.
In addition to the hospitals, you also have a lot of medical groups, so.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just glad that you're going to be approaching all of these because, again, we have to create that sustainable force.
Yes.
And, you know, that, those payments. Thank you.
Go ahead, Larry.
Chris, could you get us the, the financials on Arlington? Okay, you've described them as being very similar to us.
Yeah.
And I want to see what the hit on the general fund for Arlington is. You also said that they've increased the level of service every year since they started.
Correct.
And I'm, I'm very curious because, quite frankly, the three-year pilot project, you go down that path, you're going to create a constituency that will come into here and beat the living devil out of anybody that would vote no to end it. So what it is, is I want to find out what the hit to the general fund is going to end up being split more than likely between Prescott and Prescott Valley.
Correct. So in general, you're looking at, under traditional transit dollars, right?
No, I'm talking what they're spending. I'm fully aware of the 10% Fairbox recovery, if that much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And all that. I just want to see what's coming out of their general fund.
Right. So the first year of Arlington, they spent $323,000, $30,000 of general fund. Their total project was a million. Okay? They have now bumped that up to 1.8 million. So whatever that percentage is, that's what their percentage has gone up. So, so say it's gone from 300 to 500. So that's, that's what their impact is. So that's what you're looking at to, Councilmember Gresson's point and your point too. What happens in year four and five? You know, it's not going to be the system that it is in year one. If it's growing, it's going to be bigger. So that dollar amount may be 300,000, it may be 400,000. The current transit plan that we just came up with, I believe the town's share was somewhere around 250, but that also included public-private partnerships, advertisements, leasing, selling ride space to providers who currently provide transportation that maybe don't need to provide their own transportation with, they could just purchase rides from the system. So there's a lot of ifs and buts under that formula and obviously, we're in a world that we can't answer directly what, what that would be. But I hope that answers your question.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. So has Arlington done fixed at all or are they still doing demand response?
They're only doing demand response that I am aware of.
Okay. I'm very familiar with demand response because in my previous, most recent previous job, we did it and it was very successful and it was a total senior community with a lot of needs. And so I like that part. I too, with you, don't like leaving the 1.2 million each year on the table and I would hate to leave the 3.59 on the, on the table. So I agree with you on that. When Marty was talking about participation from other employment, what have you, and I know you've already contacted them, so they would start in year one participating and that would help us stretch those dollars to year four perhaps, correct?
That would be the goal, yes.
Okay, good. What is the size of Arlington, would you say, population?
Boy, I've read a lot about Arlington, but I do not now.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I, I'm sure I'm not the only person up here that's being lobbied and boy, am I being lobbied. So here's where I'm going with that. Obviously, you have a lobbying plan for reelected officials. Are you developing anyone to get our citizens on board?
Well, I have a.
Oh, that we don't get removed from offices?
Yeah. So, great question, good point. Those of you who are up for reelection, I completely understand that.
I've already been threatened.
Spending any money or telling anybody that you may potentially be spending money is always an issue. I would say, what I've heard from citizens and seeing the stakeholder participation, I mean, having 80 people show up at a meeting, the fourth meeting, to be pro-transit and helping to actually pick what that plan is going to be, that shows me there's public support. Not everybody agrees on everything. We can obviously see that in what's happening in the world today. But I rarely get the opposition. I do get the opposition. I'm honest with you, there, you know, there are people who are just, I don't think we need it, I don't think our area wants it. But I hear way more yes than I do no. To give you the example, our Simpo Board meeting when we adopted the plan, I had 52 letters of support and no opposition. So reaching out to the public and saying, hey, do you want this? I think I've got that information already. But marketing is a key part of a system. You can't just start running a vehicle around and expect people to get on it if they don't know it exists and they don't know where it can take them and what it would cost them. I mean, we're talking rides that could cost in the range of $2. That's a pretty good deal. An Uber ride between Prescott and Prescott Valley is going to cost you at least 20, one way.
I think the whole point of this, Chris, was for you to just come here, you give us this brief Reader's Digest version.
Yeah.
And then ultimately, because, I mean, there's still so many, because there's more questions.
Yeah.
Than answers here at this point. So I think that's basically where we're at. You were able to give an overview to council and we can kind of just proceed forward from there. I think there's another comment from councilwoman.
Yeah, sorry. So our amazing town clerk here looked it up and it's 400,000 in Arlington. If they can do demand response affordably on 400,000, that's pretty amazing.
That's impressive.
And then my second question is, so the groups, the nonprofit groups, VA and whoever around here, HOPE and whatever, that currently do their vans, they're part of your 50-some letters, correct?
Correct.
Most of them. And so would they be able to not do those vans anymore, save their money to do other programming and they would fund our program, correct?
Yeah, we could literally provide them rides for a cost cheaper than what they're providing transportation today, potentially. That's up to them. Each agency might feel that their service is important to their clients and that they still want to do that. But there might be others that, you know, want to buy the service and dump taking care of these vehicles, they're expensive.
Anything else, council?
So we'll look for, hopefully, a final of this phasing plan and then I can, you know, offer myself to come back to council. I know Mayor Mangarelli for City of Prescott has talked about maybe there's a joint meeting potentially in September so we can have both councils in one location at the same time. That has not been determined, just an idea at this point, but something for you to mull over. But I am definitely willing to come back, share with you the results of this phasing plan, what the dollar amounts would be, and that could be the answer to all of your questions, hopefully.
Oh, I don't think that's going to happen, Chris, but.
Well, the answer to all your questions is money.
Chris, you'll have answer to more.
You'll have more questions, correct. But as always, I'm always happy to hear, to be here to help the town and the council and I do appreciate, you know, staff extending the courtesy to allow me to come here today. So I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thanks for coming, Chris.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for council or anything else? We're going to call it a night. Good night.